Good evening and welcome to the 5:00 PM Tulsa City Council meeting. You can view this meeting on our Facebook page, our YouTube channel, Cox Channel 24, or at TGovOnline.org. Assisting the council tonight are Jack Flair, City Attorney, Lori Doring, Secretary to the Council, and Chris Baughman, Council staff. If you wish to speak on an agenda item, see Chris over here. He'll have you complete a request to speak card. You can't speak if we've already read the agenda item. Please join us in pledging allegiance to the flag of our country and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible and indivisible in its essence.
Thank you all. You may be seated. So we have proclamation, Lights On After School Day proclamation that Councilor Gilbert is going to give.
Thank you very much. Do we have Emily Delgrosso in the room? Okay, you guys want to come on up?
Yeah.
The whole crew. Come on, I don't bite. And I did take a shower, so.
Oh, good.
More importantly. Okay, so we're happy to present this proclamation to you all. Whereas quality after-school programs and opportunities provide safe and engaging learning experiences that help children realize their full potential and nurture their academic growth and well-being. And whereas after-school programs support working families and build stronger communities by involving students, parents, businesses, and volunteers in the lives of young people, helping them to gain important work and life skills. And whereas the OP Project LLC is committed to the education and prosperity of our youth and recognizes the quality after-school programs prepare our children to become successful adults and help our community thrive. And whereas Lights On After School and National Celebration of After-School Programs observed this year on October 23rd promotes the importance of quality after-school programs for our children and families. And whereas the City of Tulsa recognizes the importance of and acknowledges all who work to provide expanded learning opportunities that help our children learn, grow, and develop the skills essential for success in life and work. So thank you very much. So now therefore, we, the mayor and the City of Tulsa, the Tulsa City Council, do recognize Thursday, October 23rd as Lights On After School. Thank you very much. Want to say some words?
I'll be speaking later during public comment.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else want to say anything? I really appreciate everything that you do for our families, for our kids.
Can we take a photo with you all?
Yes, we're going to go do that right now. But I just wanted to say thank you so much for being there, especially for our kids' after-schooled and giving them that opportunity to expand on their learning opportunities. So, thank you. On down here? Thank you.
Three, one. Three, one, two, three. There we go. Okay, sorry. One, two, three. Thank you.
We have a timekeeping system up here. The green light means you have basically four and a half minutes. Yellow means you're in your final 30 seconds. Red means you've got to wrap it up. Please keep the podium area, railings, and aisles free from recording devices and tripods. Recording equipment and accessories, including tripods, must be set up in the media center as posted on tonight's agenda. Certain items are subject to consideration and possible approval, adoption, denial, amendment, or revision. I call this meeting to order. Please call the roll.
Counselor Hal Harper?
Here.
Counselor Archie?
Here.
Counselor Dutton?
Here.
Counselor Bellis?
Here.
Counselor Gilbert?
Here.
Counselor Dr. Wright?
Here.
Item 1, receipt and filing of minutes. A, minutes of regular meeting held at 4:00 PM on October 8th, and B, same thing at 5:00 PM. Do we have any speakers on these items?
We have no speakers.
Any council discussion?
Move to approve items 1A and B.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Counselor Archie?
Yes.
Counselor Dutton?
Yes.
Counselor Bellis?
Yes.
Counselor Gilbert?
Yes.
Counselor Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Lakin?
Yes.
Items 1A and B are approved. Appointments and reappointments. A, Tanil Bent, appointment to the Tulsa Women's Commission, filling an open seat. Do we have any speakers?
We have one speaker, Mr. John Huffine.
She's here, by the way.
Oh, great. Good. Good evening.
Good evening. Yes, peace. Yes, peace. I'm grateful for our honorable leaders, Council Chair Phil Lakin and Vice Chair Karen Gilbert, our honorable counselors, staff, team, and security. We are thankful to the citizens of this great city of love, Tulsa, Oklahoma. It is a joy to be with you on this 22nd day of October in the year of our loving Lord Jesus Christ 2025. Yes, appointments and reappointments. A, Tanil Bent, appointment to the Tulsa Women's Commission, filling an open seat. Term expires May 31st, 2028. May we continue to honor our employees and volunteers. Thank you, family.
Thank you, Mr. Huffines. Any council discussion?
Move to approve item 2A.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Counselor Archie?
Yes.
Counselor Dutton?
Yes.
Counselor Bellis?
Yes.
Counselor Gilbert?
Yes.
Counselor Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Lakin?
Yes.
Counselor Hal Harper?
Yes.
Item 2A is approved. Ms. Bent, are you here? Would you like to come up, say something? You don't have to, but certainly are always welcome.
Good evening. First, thank you to Dr. Laura Latta, the Chair of the Women's Commission, for this nomination, to Mayor Nichols for his appointment, and to all of you for the consideration and appointment of me to the Women's Commission. I come from a line of strong, giving, service-oriented women, including my late grandmothers, my mother, and my aunts, whose examples and legacies I strive to continue. I carry them with me, as I do so many other women, particularly those who are unseen, unheard, and discounted. Where women are and where we align our hearts, heads, and hands, magic and movements happen. This appointment I will carry out with gratitude, vision, and intention. Lastly, a personal mantra of mine is to be where the love is, to dwell where love dwells, as well as to be and extend love to others. And I consider that service is one of the greatest expressions of love for humanity, and I look forward to doing this work accordingly. So thank you again for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate your service to our city.
Thank you.
There are no public hearings, mayor's items. The mayor was unable to be with us tonight. B resolution, oh no, sorry. The remaining items 4B through K will not be read aloud. However, public comments will be received on these items. Do we have any speakers?
We have one speaker on items 4C, D, E, I, and J. Mr. John Huffines.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you, counselors. 4C, a travel donation from United States Police K-9 Association, USPCA, for Officer Camden Hauck to travel to Bradenton, Florida to attend the USPCA National Field Trials for Patrol K-9s. I'm grateful for our excellent police department and for all the first responders, appreciating their heart to serve the beautiful citizens of Tulsa, Oklahoma. 4D, a donation from George Kaiser Family Foundation, granted to Tulsa Community Foundation on behalf of City of Tulsa Animal Services to support residents in the Invest North community with supplies for their animals. I am grateful for the generosity of our awesome Jewish community. Almighty God, we invoke your guidance. 4E, a contract for a loan from the Gilchrist Museum Collection to the Sid Richardson Museum of the Bruin-Nott Bunny Turned the Leaders by Charles M. Russell for the Russell's Retreat Summers at Glacier National Park Exhibition. Seeing harmony among Texas and Oklahoma's museums is a joy to see. 4... 4I, a special event application, First Methodist Tulsa Holoballo scheduled for October 25th, 2025, starting at 1100 South Boulder Avenue. Their mission statement is to make fully committed followers of Jesus Christ who are grounded in the Word, alive in the Spirit, and sent on mission. They say, "Join us for the Holoballo." They say, "Get your costume ready and join us for Holoballo at First Methodist Church, Tulsa. We'll have tons of candy..." Yes, yes. I was getting excited. The next one was inflatables, but I just have to control myself here. "Get your costumes ready and join us for Holoballo at First Methodist Church, Tulsa. We'll have tons of candy, inflatables," emphasis mine, "carnival games, yard games, a petting zoo, concessions, live music, face painting, photo ops, and of course, the trunk-or-treat lot. Parking is available on city streets around the event and in surrounding church lots along Boulder and Boston avenues. This event will happen rain or shine. In the case of rain, the event will move indoors to the Youth and Family Complex at 12 East 11th Street. I'm grateful for these Christ-Jesus honoring folks who are providing friendly faces and family fun." 4J, a special event application, Harvest Winter Fest, scheduled for November 24th, 2025, through January 4th, 2026, at 300 South Denver Avenue. The Harvest Winter Fest is likely to give us... They are planning on giving us a 60-foot Christmas tree, and we can expect to hear some beautiful Christmas music as well, such as Silent Night and Oh Holy Night. Thank you, counselors, for always doing your best to help Tulsa be her best. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huffines. Any council discussion?
Move to approve items 4B through 4K.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Counselor Archie?
Yes.
Counselor Dutton?
Yes.
Counselor Bellis?
Yes.
Counselor Gilbert?
Yes.
Counselor Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Lakin?
Yes.
Counselor Hal Harper?
Yes.
Items 4B through K are approved. Five authorities, boards, and commissions. A, Resolution Number 29461075 of the TMA PC relating to the Comprehensive Plan and Neighborhood and Multiple Use Categories at the southeast corner of East 51st Street South and South Delaware Avenue. B, rezoning application Z7833 with an ODP on the southeast corner of East 51st Street and South Delaware. C, rezoning application Z7832 relating to rezoning near the southwest corner of West 37th Place South and South Elwood. D, rezoning application Z7836 from RS32CG for property located near the northwest corner of East 63rd Street South and South 101st East Avenue. E, rezoning application CO21. It's a proposed corridor development plan near southwest corner of East 63rd Street South and South 105th East Avenue. F, rezoning application Z7834 near the northwest corner of East 11th Street and the south-south 193rd East Avenue. And G, rezoning application Z7835 near the southwest corner of East 41st Street South and South 145th East Avenue. Do we have any speakers on these items?
We have one speaker on item 5G, Kevin Mavers, and the applicant's also here.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Kevin Mavers. I'm the Director of Development Services for the Robinson Group. We are the applicant and developer of the proposed neighborhoods out here. Did everybody get a copy of our updated site development plan, our lauding study? Here, we brought a new... There we go. We brought some new ones in. One of the things I wanted to point out this evening is, but before I get started, thank staff. Staff has been incredibly patient with me over the past couple of months to put this project together. And I'm not just talking about Susan's planning staff and the community development staff, but also Public Works, Water Department. Everybody's been incredibly gracious and very understanding as we move through the process. The other people I want to thank, and then I'm going to issue an apology. We did hold a public outreach meeting not long ago on September 29th. We reached out to the community and the surrounding community to ask them for their input. We invited Counselor Bengal, not knowing that this area was no longer in Council Bengler's district. So again, I take full responsibility for that. I should have double-checked, and I wanted to apologize to Counselor Dr. Wright here publicly. She has definitely been added to the list of the conversation. I know she's received a couple of emails from me recently. We are going to be holding a second public outreach meeting on the project, which will be held next Monday night, so that we can keep the public informed, keep the communities informed of how we are doing and what we are doing. But I wanted to point out that this is a very interesting project, and to be honest with you, I'm actually quite proud of this project because we're bringing to the City of Tulsa something a little bit different for a project of this size. We're not coming in with a monolithic development. In other words, a whole bunch of houses that all look exactly the same, in the exact same price range, in the exact same boring style. We've divided this particular project up into four different neighborhoods, and we're coming in with a variety of housing types, a variety of housing styles. But on top of everything else, we've got almost 25% open space, including a couple of neighborhood parks that are going to go in here, large open space areas up adjacent to 41st Street where we've got some flooding issues. Obviously, we're going to be putting in all the retention basins to ensure that the flooding issues are mitigated out in that area. But this is a rather unique property and a rather unique project, and as I said, we're very proud of it. We're already moving forward on some of the concerns that were addressed by the staff, as well as concerns addressed by the public at our outreach meetings. Not the least of which is traffic. I believe everybody knows and understands the traffic issues along in that particular area, the intersections of 41st and 145th, and 51st and 145th, as well as, I believe it's 46th? 46, yes. Several times a day, it's next to impossible to get through there. I know this from personal experience because I used to live at 51st and 145th. And there would be times when I first moved here to this part of the world, I was living in one of those apartment projects, and I'd be attempting to get out either to go to work or go to lunch or go to dinner or do something on the weekend, and I'd be sitting, trying to get out of that apartment project for 10 minutes, waiting for people to go by and be able to get out on the street. So it gets to be difficult. So one of the things we've undertaken is a major comprehensive traffic impact analysis. We will share, obviously, share those findings with staff, with your traffic department, with Public Works, and everybody else, so that they can take a look at what's going on out here and make sure that we are not impacting. The other thing that we did in order to make sure we don't impact adjacent neighborhoods is, you'll see, there is a collector's street running from 145th down near the south corner of the site all the way up to 41st Street. That is a major collector. There are no homes fronting on that street, all homes front to the interior, but that's designed to funnel all traffic away from those existing neighborhoods and funnel it out to either 41st or 145th, keeping those streets clear. We did add a couple of extra streets, though, going down to 46, knowing and understanding that there will probably be children that will be occupying some of these homes along with their parents, the families, and we wanted to make sure that we had walking connections. We don't want people to have to drive. There's a... Twice a day, 46 is very impacted there in front of the school. We wanted the local children to be able to walk to school. We put one of the driveways, one of the streets, immediately across the street from the driveway and endless, so that we could go through and, working with Public Works, working with the Streets Division, possibly go ahead and stripe that for a crosswalk thing. So twice a day, you'd be able to have crosswalks, crossing guards, and people would be able to walk through. So with all of those thoughts in mind, we obviously look forward to your review. We are here to answer any questions. I've also brought with me Preston Bartley. He's project manager for Westwood Consulting Services. They are our engineer on the project, and we are both here to answer any questions or address any concerns.
And are you the applicant on the project? Or, Chris, did you say somebody else was here?
I believe it was Preston was the person.
Yep.
Technically, he's the applicant, yes.
We've seen you for the last three meetings, it feels like. What are you doing next week? Okay. We won't be, yeah.
I've got two weeks from that.
It's a trick question. Yeah.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions? Yes, Counselor Dr. Wright, and then Bellis.
Thank you for the apology. Wasn't necessary. Counselor Bengal filled me in as soon as he realized what was going on, and this part of town was District 6 for a very long time. I won't be able to attend your meeting on Monday, but if there's things that pop up, certainly you have my email now. I'm already committed to going to another community meeting on Monday. I love the thoughtfulness. Just for my colleagues, this is just north of Rosa Parks Elementary School, and it has a community health connection clinic there. If you'll remember, under Counselor Dodson, that got done when it was still District 6. The most recent firehouse is not too far from here, so this place is ready for growth, and I'm excited about the mixed housing that's coming in and the thoughtfulness about walkability. And just for anyone that's worried about traffic, in the last IOT 3 package, we, Counselor Bengal and I, knew that this area was also primed for growth, and so we've got design dollars for widening and improvements on the corridor. So just, you know, when the rooftops come, then we see an acceleration of all the infrastructure improvements as well, and that's just how we do things here in Tulsa. So I'm excited about this. I'll be open to hearing, you know, the feedback that you do get on Monday, and if there's another meeting we need to have, or if I need to go, you know, and talk to the school or talk to existing neighbors, I'm happy to do that, but thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just really excited about having over 600 units coming in. That really helps us and gets us a long way towards our housing goal. I was just curious, since this shows those different phases, could you tell us a little bit more about... This is just for our own purposes of thinking about the goals we have and when we're achieving them for housing, the timeline, or when we could expect some of these to come online, kind of based on your... I know there's a lot of variability to construction, of course.
I was just saying, if the builder had his way, it'd be tomorrow. Okay? Now, being realistic about the time it's going to take to go through the engineering, that's why we already started on some of the engineering. We're probably looking at, once we get the preliminary plat filed and reviewed and approved, which hopefully will be... Are we filing the preliminary plat here pretty quick? Yeah. So it'll be before the end of the year. We should have preliminary plat approval. We're probably looking at about a three-month timeframe to get all of our designs and the engineering, so we should be breaking ground on the dirt work on Phase 1 by the middle of 2026. Give us six to nine months of site prep and infrastructure. You should see homes starting to go vertical early 2027.
Yeah, this looks really great. I'm excited for you guys. What is the average square footage of the properties?
I would have to break that down into individual neighborhoods for you because we have four different neighborhood types.
So the yellow, that seems to have the most?
Yeah, the ones in the... I would call that light yellow or golden rod, light golden rod there. Those are going to be the largest home sites and homes, and it's my understanding those are going to be somewhere between 1,800 and 2,500 square feet, depending on whether they're a three-bedroom or four-bedroom, whether they have bonus rooms and things like that. Each one of the neighborhoods will have at least four different model types, it's my understanding, and of those four different model types, each different model type will have at least three, possibly four. And of those four different model types, each, uh, different model type will have at least three, possibly four different facades. So we're going to get into a situation where in addition to the different types of neighborhoods, I mean, we go as small as cottage homes, which are designed for, you know, singles or couples to come in that are looking for their first home to buy. Or it's designed for people downsizing, people that, uh, people who hopefully, like me in a couple of years, will be thinking about moving from my half acre and I don't want to deal with all that anymore. You know, and looking for something a little more efficient, a little closer to downtown, um, so that I can go to all the hockey games I want to go to. But the, uh, you know, so we're looking at a, uh, I believe that from what I understand, that the cottage homes, those will start in the twelve to thirteen hundred square foot range, go up to about eighteen hundred square feet. So largest homes in the twenty-five hundred square foot range, smallest homes down around twelve or thirteen hundred square feet. Obviously, the marketing departments are doing all of their market research now, and that's one of the reasons why I wanted to present the latest layout. One of the things you'll see is the market research is indicating is that the cottage homes right now for first-time home buyers and for people wanting to downsize, that is an incredibly hot market right now. People are looking for those types of homes because they don't want to deal with all the maintenance and they don't want to deal with all the, they want to be able to, uh, live. They want to know that there's going to be an HOA watching out for them and everything else. And it's going to be, uh, it's going to be an exciting project. I'm actually very, very happy to be a part of it.
I was also going to ask about an HOA, so you already answered that question for me. Thank you.
Cool. Um, thank you for being here. Question, um, you answered the first one, people will be able to buy these homes, so that's homeownership for sure. What are the price range, uh, for some of these homes that you're projecting?
Most of the homes are going to start in the low three hundreds. Okay, they will probably go up to the mid-three hundreds to, uh, mid to high three hundreds, depending again on, I mean, if you've ever been to buy a house recently, there's, there's the price for the basic home. And then, of course, you can add on to it almost exponentially. It's kind of gets crazy. It's like buying a car nowadays. And unfortunately, the unfortunate reality is one of the reasons we have to go with smaller homes in, to, in order to make them more affordable, is the cost of construction is just, over the last few years, gone up exponentially. You know, we're looking at, uh, average cost of construction at about two hundred dollars a square foot. So that's why you're seeing some smaller homes. If we get into the thirteen, twelve, thirteen hundred, we may be able to bring them in sub-three hundred. Okay, uh, but the builders right now are working all that out. One of the other things that's, uh, unique, and I did not mention it before, but because we know that some people have a tough time, especially here in, uh, in Tulsa. Rents have gone up so exponentially that it's hard, especially for a young couple, a young family and everything else, to pay rent and save for a home at the same time. One of the unique neighborhoods we have down there in the blue there, that is our build-to-rent neighborhood. Those homes will be built, designed and built and maintained and taken care of, and will have an HOA just like a regular single-family neighborhood. The difference is they are designed for people who cannot afford to buy right now. Maybe they've got credit problems, maybe they don't have an adequate down payment. But they can move into a home, they can occupy that home, they can build their credit as well as build equity towards the down payment. So it's just going to be another avenue to homeownership that our builders are providing.
So you're saying that those homes in the blue will be, um, less expensive?
No, they're going to be exactly the same as the ones in the, uh, the gold colored ones.
Right, the red would just be.
The only difference, the only difference is they're going to be designed, it's a, it's a, it's an independent community that's designed, uh, to be, uh, occupied by renters first. Okay, the HOA will be identical. It'll still be a managed HOA. The only difference is people will be able to move into them, utilize their rent, and a portion of their rent will go towards a down payment after they rebuilt their credit or enhanced their credit and lived in the home, home for a certain amount of time. Because it is a subdivision, just like every.
Oh, rent to own.
Yeah, no, it is not. This is not a, uh, there'll be individual lots, individual houses. It'll look exactly like a single-family residential neighborhood. The only difference is your entry point is much, much less expensive.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Any other speakers?
We have no more speakers.
Any council discussion?
Move to approve items five A through G.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Counselor Archie?
Yes.
Counselor Dutton?
Yes.
Counselor Bellis?
Yes.
Counselor Gilbert?
Yes.
Counselor Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Lakin?
Yes.
Counselor Hal Harper?
Yes.
Items five A through G are approved. Six, the following items in the section of the agenda will not be read aloud, and without objection, items six A through B will be forwarded to the next council meeting for action. Seven, ordinances, second reading. A rezoning ordinance, Z seven eight two nine, uh, from RS three to AGR for property located at the northwest corner of West Seventy-Eighth Street and South Twenty-Sixth West Avenue. B ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty-six budget, making supplemental appropriations of fifty-three point nine million dollars, uh, related to the twenty twenty-four GO bond. C ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty-six budget to make supplemental appropriations of fifty-three point eight oh five million dollars, uh, for the twenty twenty GO bond. D ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty-six budget to make supplemental appropriations of forty-nine thousand eight hundred fifty-nine dollars for citywide traffic engineering, signal installation, repair and replacement. E ordinance amending Title Thirty-seven relating to the traffic code, event permits, special event permits, and a whole bunch of other things. F ordinance amending Tulsa Revised Ordinances Title Twenty-seven Penal Code, Chapter Twenty-eight, uh, relating to curfew hours for juveniles, and it does have the emergency clause. Do we have any speakers on these items?
We have two speakers. First on item seven C, Lane Brown.
Counselors, uh, thank you guys. Um, fifty-three million dollars for streets, sidewalks, bridges. Now, I don't know about y'all, but every time I hear that line, I feel like I'm being told the same used car line, uh, sorry, excuse me. I feel like I'm being sold the same used car with a fresh paint job. That's what I feel like every time I hear we're, we're putting more money into roads. Tulsa's been throwing millions at these streets for years. They're still falling apart. But you guys say that it's for roads. I say it's for excuses. Because if every dollar that was appropriated actually hit the pavement, we would be driving on literal marble right now. Speaking of roads, are there any future, are there any features that will protect roads from pedestrians being violently assaulted since Jackie Dutton believes that that's the only way to make civic change?
Yeah, you need to address the entire council, not individual.
My, my apology, yep. Uh, those roads are going to need reinforcement. Uh, if our elected officials hold that belief that bloodshed is the only change for that or is needed, uh, elected officials hold that belief that bloodshed is the need needed for change and that peaceful protest doesn't work. Here's what that individual said. Nothing has ever changed without bloodshed, physical confrontation, outright frontline civil unrest in my sixty.
Entire council, not individual counselors. Address the entire council.
Okay.
Yeah, and if you can just address the GO bond generally.
Yeah, I am. It's about security for the pedestrians that might be violently assaulted. Yeah. So, and so instead, I'll, I'll go off that topic for you guys. But so instead of, so, so instead of fixing streets, we're out here talking about street fights. If that's the new plan for infrastructure, maybe this fifty-three million dollars isn't for roads, maybe it's for riot gear. Um, let me tell you guys something. Um, this rhetoric doesn't, uh, build bridges, it burns them. It does. It doesn't fix potholes, it digs them deeper. And it sure as heck doesn't reflect the values of Tulsa's hard-working, God-fearing taxpayers. We don't need bloodshed, we need budgeting. We don't need confrontation, we need competence. This isn't about left versus right. This is quite literally about right versus wrong. And it's wrong to keep pouring tens of millions into the same black hole while those roads, those, the roads like we are driving on look like we're driving on roads through Baghdad. So here's my message before this council approves another dime. Show us the receipts, show us where the last money went, prove to taxpayers that this isn't just another feel-good vote that ends up on another headline. Because Tulsa doesn't need radical, uh, rhetoric, it needs responsible leadership. Thank you, guys.
Excuse me, I have a question for you, sir. What, um, district do you live in here in Tulsa?
That, that doesn't pertain to you, does it? Yeah, that doesn't matter.
It does matter to us because if we want to address the streets and bridges in your district, your councilor's sitting here.
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Next speaker, please.
Next speaker on seven F, Evan Taylor.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing me. Um, so I, I know most people's minds are probably made up on this, and I'm speaking to people that have solid opinions. But I just wanted to get my voice in for the people that are not here. The, the youth who don't know to show up to city council, right? Because they're busy dealing with after-school programs or playing football or studying, who knows? But I'm just curious, what is going on here where we're just prolonging this another year? Are you guys expecting one of you to change your minds or our entire city's youth to just suddenly become more mature? I, I don't understand why we're just, all right, six months, it's a year, you're sitting on the fence. Make a decision because all you're doing right now is teasing these youth. You're saying, hey, we may give you your rights back, potentially in a year, probably not, because it's going to be the same people up here. And so I'm just wondering why we're sitting on the fence and not letting these youth know, hey, we support you or no, we don't. And in regards to the downtown area, I don't understand why we don't want them gathering in a certain place. So after the first in July, I believe, or June was when it was first, uh, reviewed, I went through, when the school year started, and I went to local high schools. Just randomly picked some TPAS, Jinx, uh, Union, went to the, uh, lunchrooms and was just talking to random students. And it was like, hey, where do you guys go now? Like, and half of them weren't even aware about the curfew. They were like, I, I don't know, I just stay at home and play video games. I don't know. And but the ones that did go out and do things, right, and socialize and interact, and which I do want to encourage that, by the way, when we talk about video games and everything, we're becoming way more distant. So the idea of bringing people together in a small area is what I would love to see. But I want to see, and this is what I learned from the high schoolers, is they're just going to go other places. They're going to go hide and have little parties and abandoned apartments, under, underpasses, uh, way back in the woods, whatever, and they're going to get hurt. All right? And now they're going to be off in the middle of nowhere, hurt, not able to get an ambulance or like that. I understand we're trying to protect the businesses downtown. But when the youth are allowed to hang out in one little area, you know, I used to hang out, and downtown isn't anywhere near what it is now. But I used to just come down here and just ride my bike around or whatnot. Now they have scooters or TikToks, all kinds of things they can do to participate, and they were in one little area to where we could help control them. And I understand it was out of control, but that's where you go talk to them as individuals and be like, hey, you saw, you know, the stick, right? A year, we gave you a stick, we're going to open it back up. And this is all I'm asking you, right, in the year, because I, like I said, I don't know if anyone's opinions are going to change. But in the year, I would love to see you guys come with the carrot and be like, we're giving it back to you, but just know we can take it away. And then, so that's all I'm asking you is to just, actually, when the year comes up, please have an open mind to be able to reconsider this idea. I don't think a year is, I think that's too long, six months might be more appropriate, but I understand, like I said, so that's all I'm hoping is that you guys just keep an open mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers, Chris?
We have no more speakers.
Uh, Counselor Dutton?
So I have a couple of questions. Um, first, I'm kind of wondering how you got into the schools. Don't you have to have special permission?
I, I'm in graduate school, and so I was using it as a study for a research project.
Do you have the paperwork on the research project? That would be interesting. It's what?
It's turned in to my professor. Would you like to see it?
Oh, yeah, you can bring it. Next council meeting, I'd like to read it. I'm also curious as to if you have data to actually confirm, um, the idea that the youth are being dispersed as well as the fact that they're having parties under underpasses and in vacant apartment buildings or vacant homes or whatever. And that they're actually getting hurt.
No, that's a fair question.
If, if you're gonna, do you, do you want him to respond? Are you just asking these generally?
Yeah, no, I'd like, no, I'd like.
Okay, if you're gonna answer, you have to come up. So the four people who are watching on T-Gov, okay, hear you.
No, that's a great question, uh, and a great thing to bring up, too. Uh, I have data that I used in my report, actually, so whenever I do go get that, I will, uh, and I got a B on the report, too, by the way, so not an A-plus material. But that's also the opinion of the professor. But anyhow, um, what I found was there was little data. But that's why when I was asking the high schoolers, hey, where are you guys going? We're not going to get data on it because they're doing what spiders do. The more we kill spiders, the better they hide, right? That's the whole point of evolution. So you take away these areas from the youth, they're going to go hide, so that's what I'm talking about. I don't want to mention, because some of the youth that told me the areas that they went to were friends, like my family friends, and they were like, oh, yeah, I went down to such-and-such, Shadow Mountain Apartment Complex there. And broke in. So I mean, that's what I'm saying, like, and you're not going to get that information in reports because they're not, they're not getting caught. So, I don't know.
Well, I, I guess I'm, I can appreciate your concern. I really can. We have also requested that we have regular updates. And we know from the data from the curfew this last time that there were only five individuals from, what is it, June? Yeah, through basically now. So that tells me that the police department is actually talking like you asked.
Yeah, five individuals, I'm sorry, for what, that, that got arrested?
Were cited.
Oh, cited, okay, yeah, yeah, sorry, that's what I meant, yeah.
That were out beyond, what, midnight, I think it was, something like that.
And those were all issued within the first maybe month and not subsequently.
So, so that tells me that the police department is actually doing, uh, a great job at speaking with the youth. And I can tell you that that is not their main concern to, you know, just start harassing youth or whatever downtown. But I do know as well that the youth, they're not all coming from Jinx or Union or South Side just to hang out downtown. They already have their established places anyway. So, um, I can appreciate your concerns and I really do look forward to the information that you can share.
Yeah, of course. And I just want to say, too, I'm glad there's improvement, but if there's improvement, right, then shouldn't we open it back up to them, right? Be like, hey, you guys did a good job. You get your toy back.
Well, I think we're just waiting on data more than anything.
Okay, I'll give you my B-plus report. Like I said, it's a B-plus.
No, I mean, um, data from TPD and the businesses, um, around the area. As well as crime stats for the above eighteen age group. So I mean, we're going to do all that comparative research through what we're going to be receiving.
Well, I hope that it proves that, like I said, all I want is when a year comes up that your mind right now isn't already set.
Right, gotcha. Appreciate it.
Counselor Dutton, I'm, she's speaking. Dr. Wright?
Yeah, this is just for council discussion.
Thank you.
I appreciate that on October fifteenth, when we have this in Public Works, we kind of talk through why a year, why, um, we're going to have quarterly reports for this data. Why, um, we're taking it from Thursday, Friday, Saturday down to Friday, Saturday, so that we really did deliberate to have the most amount of safety achieved with the least amount of restrictions. We want young people in downtown. We want people of all ages downtown. We want families downtown. There's families that live downtown. So it's really about crowd control and some of the things that we really saw flare up this summer that I think when we took action, um, even then, we didn't do the seven days a week, which was originally proposed. So I appreciate that we as a body have been very deliberative and thoughtful and are using the feedback that we're getting. It was actually, um, some of the people that made the initial request that said, you know what, Thursday's not actually reflected on the data that we needed. As for the Vista Shadow Mountain con, comment, um, we're having a community meeting on November third to talk about that. And so, uh, that complex, that'll be under redevelopment, so I will definitely be asking some questions about security. And if there's any people up there that are unauthorized, that is not appropriate. Certainly, young people should not be up there for all kinds of reasons. Those buildings were tagged for demolition. And so those kids should not be running through those buildings till they're redeveloped and, and ready for occupancy. So, um, I appreciate the comment that I heard. I will definitely be following up on that. I think we're being smart and a year. I think we're being smart, and a year from now, we can look again. I know we've had some conversation about, do we need to have a 9:30 outside of downtown? And I'm sure if something flares up in my part of town, whether it's at Vista Shadow Mountain or the mall or anywhere else, I will definitely bring it here and say, we've, we've got a tool, let's see if we need to use it in other places.
Yep, agreed. Kelsa?
I did just want to clarify that this doesn't preclude youth being downtown, including during those hours, it's just about, you need to be at a, you know, an activity, a concert, a restaurant with a guardian or some type of adult, you know, an adult who has supervisory power or something like that. So this isn't a, you can't be here, it's just trying to encourage a safe way to be present. I would view it as a harm reduction tool, while simultaneously, we know we need to provide other safe third spaces for youth to hang out and be able to recreate and have free, fun, safe time. That's definitely a gap in our community that's undeniable, and simultaneously, we also have to really promote safety as best we can downtown, and so I think this is a good middle ground for that.
Agreed. Any other council discussion?
Ready to move? Approval of 7A through 7F with the emergency clause on 7F.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Councilor Archie?
Yes.
Councilor Dutton?
Yes.
Councilor Bellis?
Yes.
Councilor Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilor Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Councilor Lakin?
Yes.
Councilor Hall Harper?
Yes.
Items 7A through F are approved with the emergency clause on 7F, eight council items. Anybody have an announcement or a report? Yes.
So as I just stated, we will be having a community meeting on Monday, November 3rd, at 6:30 in Grand Talbot Union High School to meet with the owners of Vista Shadow Mountain and go over their redevelopment plan that has been approved by the mayor's office in the city of Tulsa. So it is open to anyone in the community that wants to learn more about, I think it's a five-year, five-phased plan, and as I understand it, representatives of the ownership and the redevelopment team will be there, so if you have questions, concerns, ideas, that will be the time on Monday, November 3rd, to come learn and ask. And then I did want to just boost the signal that on the 27th, we're continuing community conversations hosted by the mayor's office, some of us have been attending, and I think Monday's at the Herman Kaiser, Herman Ke, Kaiser, is it at 6? I'll check. 5:30 on Monday, the 27th, and the topic is housing and homelessness. So join us on the west side for that conversation. They, the media's been live-streaming and things, so if you can't make it, it's a, still a possibility for you to engage, and I think they've been taking questions ahead of time and asking them in kind of a round robin with the panel, so I'll be there, and I know some of you will, and I hope to see more at the next conversation. And then there's one more before the end of the month, and that's on Thursday, October 30th. Our final and fifth community conversation will be held at North Tulsa Dream Center, again, at 5:30, and this topic will be neighborhood conditions and vitality.
Yep, good reminders. Anyone else? Item nine, new business, there is none, there are no hearing of appeals. Eleven, hearing of public comments. This concludes the televised portion of our meeting.